Good afternoon. Welcome to the regular meeting of the New Ulm Planning Commission, New Ulm, Minnesota, Thursday, February 26, 2015, 4:30 PM. I'd like to first introduce Mr. Jeff Golden to the commission.
Jeff.
And first item would be to approve the minutes of the January 29, 2015, meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye. All opposed? None being said. Next item of business is to public hearing. Consider the applicant of Michael King on behalf of 3M Company and Dan Herman on behalf of JR and R partnership requesting a conditional use permit to allow auxiliary warehouse for storage of non-hazardous materials in a B2 service business zoning district on the property legally described as lots 1 through 14, block 122, north of Center Street, together with a vacated alley lying within said block, 122, street address, 1615 North State Street. I will look for staff for report.
Thank you. Notice of the public hearing has been sent to all property owners within 350 feet of the subject property. Property is located north of 16th North Street and west of North Broadway. Located on the property is a single-story building of approximately 56,000 square feet, most recently occupied by Runnings. To the west of the site are residential properties, to the north a city park, to the south the fairgrounds, and to the east a combination of retail, service, and a limited number of residential uses. Property to the west, north, and south is zoned R1, which is a single-family residence district, and to the east is zone B2. The building was constructed in 1973 and was initially occupied by a grocery store. The building has approximate dimensions of, the information that you have on your sheet is inaccurate, a closer measurement would be 214 feet by 260 feet. The block with vacated alley has dimensions of 350 by 350 feet for a total area of 122,500 square feet or 2.81 acres. The building has off-street loading facilities and off-street parking is located in front of the building. Other potential parking areas surround the building. The parking area can adequately accommodate the building's parking needs if it's used for warehousing purposes. Runnings opened their new store at 2107 North Garden Street in January of 2014. The building at 1615 North State Street has been empty since that time. 3M facilities are located approximately three blocks from the subject property. The permit is requested only for block 122. So as you look at the zoning map, you'll note that between this property and Broadway, there's another full block of property, and that is not impacted by this request. The purpose of the B2 zoning district is to provide a district for a wide range of services and goods which might be incompatible with the uses permitted in retail business districts. It is intended that the B2 service business district be located in separate areas which may be adjacent to other retail business districts or in close proximity to a major street. Permitted uses in the B2 district include a combination of retail, service, office, and light industrial uses. Other business activities of the same general character as those listed as permitted uses are allowed in the B2 zoning district with a conditional use permit. A warehouse is a permitted use in the I-1 planned industrial and I-2 general industrial zoning district. In order to recommend approval of the permit, the commission will need to determine, number one, that the proposed use is of the same general character as permitted uses in the B2 zone, and two, that the request complies with the conditions required for the granting of a conditional use permit, and those are identified in Section 9.82 subdivision 2 of the city code. Those conditions are as follows. A, that the conditional use will not substantially diminish or impair property values within the immediate vicinity. B, that the conditional use will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, and welfare of the persons residing and working in the area. C, that the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development of surrounding property for uses predominant in the area. D, that adequate utilities, access road, drainage, and sanitary facilities have been planned and will be provided. E, that adequate measures have been taken to provide parking and loading space and that storage and accessory structures necessary to serve the proposed use are built. F, that adequate measures are taken to protect against odor, noise, and site pollution. G, that the ecology of the area is maintained by protection against water, air, and general erosion. Attached is a copy of the application, a zoning map showing the location of the property, an aerial and ground level photograph of the building, and a listing of the permitted and conditional uses allowed in the B2 zoning district. Recommendation: The staff would recommend approval of the request with the condition that the applicant pay the cost to record the permit with Brown County. Staff would make this recommendation for the following reasons. Number one, the request complies with the conditions required for the granting of a conditional use permit. Number two, the proposed use is of the same general character as some of the permitted uses in the B2 zone. Three, business activities would generally be less intense than most B2 uses. Number four, the 3M company is located only three blocks from the subject property, allowing timely access to maintain building security, monitor building operations, and ease movement of products to and from the building. And number five, this is the only building in New Ulm large enough to meet their requirements.
All right. Thank you, Dave. At this point, I would like to open up the public hearing for discussion. Do we have anybody from 3M that would like to speak on behalf? Please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is John Illichman. I'm the plant manager for 3M here in New Ulm. Address is 1700 North Minnesota Street here in New Ulm. That's the business address. I'd like to say thank you to the members of the commission for allowing us to file this application and to speak on behalf of our company and our employees. Our business has been very good recently. Through the hard work of our employees, their good work ethic, and their productivity, we've been able to attract some new product lines for our plant, and that has resulted in some significant growth in our business. We have been able to do some hiring as a result of that. We hired 113 new 3M employees last year. We continue to take applications and hire more people this year, and those are good, high-paying jobs. The average starting wage is over $18 an hour with a potential increase of a dollar an hour after six months of good employment. It includes all of the benefits starting on day one. So we're very happy to have that growth and want to continue that. One of the results of that is that we're bursting at the seams in terms of ability to warehouse and store the materials to support that, so much so that it has caused us to suffer some productivity problems and the inability to get our products shipped to our customers on a timely basis. So we have an urgent need to find some extra storage space, and having a space locally is very beneficial to us, which is how we got here to this position. Our plans are, if approved and we complete the deal to lease the facility, that it would be a low-impact warehousing, that we would not have very frequent 53-foot semi-trailers going in and out of the facility. Our estimate is a total of roughly 20 truck stops per day, and that the majority of those would be our own smaller size, what we call a cube truck, much smaller than a semi, that we would use just locally between our 3M manufacturing buildings and the former Runnings building. So our goal is to be as minimal impact on the neighborhood as we possibly can. We also don't expect to have a large number of staff people in the facility. We're thinking, you know, possibly two to four people, and that they're just to operate it in a warehouse manner, that at some point down the road, maybe there would be some very light assembly or packaging, but our primary use is for warehousing only. In terms of upkeep of the facility, our objective would be to maintain the facility, especially the exterior, in good keeping with the community and the neighborhood, and that would be similar to our facility, North Minnesota Street, and the other part of our property facing North Front Street. At this point, if there's questions on why we're pursuing this or how we would operate, you know, I'd be glad to answer those for the commission.
I do have a question. The application lines five and six, no, six and seven state warehouse and assembly operations, and the use permit is for warehousing. So does the potential of some assembly being done in here change the conditional use permit?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Because you indicated just some potential light assembly.
Yes.
Okay. Or packaging. Okay.
Yeah.
That was just...
That is not our initial plan, but trying to think as long-term as possible if there was something, you know, and we're talking mostly manual operations, not loud machinery or things like that.
I just didn't know if it changed the conditional use permit if there was assembly there. That was my only question.
Would you be storing any semi-trailers on the site?
Storing.
Did you say storing?
Right.
That is not our plan. Our plan is to, we use some semi-trailers for storage, and that is on our existing property now.
So you wouldn't be putting any empty trailers or trailers there?
That's correct. That's not our plan.
Hours of operation would be what?
We would operate the facility 24 hours, although it would primarily be staffed, and we would have receival of the semi-trucks primarily just on the daytime hours. As I think most people in the community are aware, our manufacturing operations run 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So we would be looking to use that smaller-sized truck, maybe on an up-to-two-hour frequency to shuttle materials back and forth. But again, we don't plan and don't expect to operate semi-trailers for receival or shipments on those off-hours.
How many trucks would you think you would run after 10 o'clock?
We only have the one smaller-sized truck, which we call a cube truck, and our expectation is that that really wouldn't operate more than once every two hours. Our goal is to have that operate as minimally as possible because there's a cost to us involved with that.
I'm just thinking of the neighbors after 10 o'clock if they're in bed. Is it a diesel truck?
No, it is not a diesel truck.
And the only part that's really got residential by it is the west, well, the west side.
Yes.
And so is that where the loading dock is, though? Is in the back, isn't it?
It is in the back.
Yeah.
So there is a retaining wall on the backside of that, so that does provide some noise shelter from that.
Okay.
Also, we have employees who live in the community, some of whom live right there across the street from the facility, and they would help be our eyes and ears.
Plus, we have to remember Randall's was there one time.
That's true.
They were 24/7, so they received freight 24/7 all the time and had, you know, reefer trucks running.
Yep. That's true. So this is going to be much quieter.
I've got a question for Dave. Did we have anybody, anybody call in or any written complaints or anything?
We did not have any written communications. I did have a telephone call with an area property owner, and we, you know, talked a little bit about the proposed use, but that person advised me that they supported the project.
Is this a long-term plan, like more than five years or two years?
We don't have a signed lease agreement yet. The one that we're working to negotiate currently is for three years with annual extensions possible. My personal longer-term goal would be that we build on our property. Obviously, we need to get lots of corporate approvals, and there's lots of business analysis, but that would be much...
My asking is that, you know, I'm just wondering if some other entity wanted to develop that whole site, whether you'd be able to vacate it, you know, reasonable time to facilitate some of the, making use of the total property rather than just part of it?
Right. I don't really know the answer to that. The reason why we're pursuing this right now is we have an urgent, immediate need, and we need to find some storage space. If at some point, let's say one or two years down the road, if a situation like that would come up, you know, we would look at what the options are, and if we could find another option that was financially attractive to 3M, we might consider vacating the facility.
Am I right in understanding that JR and R is not the owners of the property, they're just the warehouse managers for you, for the site?
They are the current owners.
They're the current owners, okay.
Right.
And that is the name that Runnings holds their properties under.
Sure, Marshall. Makes sense.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit under the conditions stated in the document.
Second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None being said. Next item of business, we'll look for you at the March 3 council meeting, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, our next item is B. Consider the request of the New Ulm Planning Commission to rezone from RA agriculture residence district to R1 single-family residence district. The property legally described as lot 1, block 3, North Highland Avenue, and adjoining portions of Boundary and Elm Streets, 1419-1507 North Highland Avenue. Look for staff for report.
Okay. First off, items B and C, I think as you can tell from the agenda, are connected. The reason that they're identified separately is that in item B, that property is currently owned by the city of New Ulm, and in item C, that property is currently owned by School District 88. So that's why they're being dealt with separately. I should also note that in both B and C, you will see reference to the streets. Typically, we don't do that when we have a rezoning request or a plating request. The reason we're doing it in this particular situation, as you can maybe tell from looking at the plat map, is that we have streets that are being vacated and we have streets that are being replatted. And so we just want to make sure that people know that this rezoning applies to this entire area. So there's no question about that at some point in time in the future. Okay. Notice of the public hearing has been sent to all property owners within 350 feet of the subject property. The planning commission previously approved a motion to conduct the public hearing, and that motion was made at your January 29 meeting. Property is generally located south of North Highland Avenue and east of the New Ulm Airport. Lot 1 totals 1.02 acres. The subject property and surrounding area have been farmed in the past. Properties to the northeast, south, and west are currently zoned RA. A portion of the property to the west is located in Milford Township and is zoned by Brown County as I-1, which is an agriculture classification. Comprehensive plan designates the property for park open space. The rezoning would establish one zoning classification for the property that will be used by the new high school complex. A high school is a permitted use in the R1 zoning district. Utilities to serve the property are located in Oak Street and North Highland Avenue. Recommendations on rezoning requests are to be based on consideration of the following criteria. Number one, whether the proposed rezoning corrects an error in the original zoning text or map, or two, whether the proposed rezoning addresses needs arising from a changing condition trend or fact affecting the subject property and surrounding area. There is another criteria, whether the proposed rezoning is consistent with achieving the goals and objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan. A rezoning must meet one of the first two criteria that is identified. Attached is a copy of the zoning map of this area, the land use map from the city's comprehensive plan, and an aerial and ground level photograph of the property. Staff would recommend approval of the rezoning for the following reasons. The rezoning meets one of the first two criteria described above for the rezoning of the property, and more particularly, the rezoning addresses a changing condition, trend, or fact affecting the subject property and surrounding area. And specific items in support of that conclusion are that the property is a proposed location for a new high school complex, including parking lots, athletic spaces, and study areas. The community has determined through a public vote that a new high school should be constructed. This area is a logical and suitable location for a high school due to its size and proximity to the developed community. Utilities are available to serve the property. A high school is a permitted use in the R1 zoning district, and the original zoning of the property as RA is no longer appropriate for the reasons stated previously.
Thank you, Dave. At this point, I would like to open up the public hearing for discussion. I guess question to staff. Did anybody in the neighborhood have any concerns with rezoning?
I didn't get a call about this particular request. Item C, I did receive a call on that, so move maybe address that with that item.
Any further discussion? At this point, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion.
So moved.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None being said. Next item of business is, consider the petition of Jeff Bertrand, Superintendent of Schools, on behalf of Independent School District 88 to rezone from RA agriculture residence district and R3 multiple-family residence district to R1 single-family residence district. The property legally described as Oatlot 162-168, fraction P, part of Oatlot 159-161, 169, 186-192, part of fraction O, and adjoining portions of Boundary, Elm, and Oak Street. Street address 1009 to 1417 North Highland Avenue and 1500 to 1908 Oak Street. And we'll look for staff for report.
Okay. A more complete legal description is attached to the rezoning petition. This, the property being rezoned also extends to the south of Oak Street, so it actually would line up with the extension of 11th North Street. Notice of the public hearing, again, has been provided to all property owners within 350 feet of the subject property. The property is located south and west of North Highland Avenue and north of Oak Street. The property to be rezoned excluding street right-of-way totals approximately 54.4 acres. A lot of the information that follows is information that I provided with the previous items, so if you do not have any objection, I think I will avoid repeating that.
Okay.
Again, recommendations on rezoning requests are to be based on consideration of the following criteria. Whether the proposed rezoning corrects an error in the original zoning text or map, or whether the proposed rezoning addresses needs arising from a changing condition, trend, or fact affecting the subject property and surrounding area. Then an additional criteria is that the proposed rezoning is consistent with achieving the goals and outlines, or objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan. And a rezoning must meet one of those first two criteria. Attached is a copy of the zoning petition, legal description of the property, a zoning map of this area, the land use map from the city's comprehensive plan, and an aerial and ground level photograph of the property. Staff would again recommend approval of the rezoning for the reasons identified, and those reasons are identical to the ones that were provided for item B.
Thank you, Dave. At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing up for discussion.
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. Just looking at the close proximity of the airport, are we just looking for future problems with having athletic field light towers, parking lot towers, and conflict with the airport? I know along Highland, there's some streetlights that are turned off because they conflict with some cross, maybe it's the old cross runway. But I just have that concern, you know, where you see other cities where all of a sudden they get a conflict that the people want to be compensated because airport in New Orleans, and we don't have a busy airport, but we're just so close to the airport with all this.
Yeah. The school district is required to secure approval from the state of Minnesota, Division of Aeronautics, and from the regional office of the Federal Aviation Administration, and they are in process of doing that. The lights that you referred to are for the Crosswind Runway, which, you know, is fairly close to the edge of the city's airport property. So that is in process at the present time.
I guess, Dave, you said you had somebody that had a concern?
I just, we received a telephone call from an adjoining property owner that just was curious about the rezoning and why it was taking place, and so does, there were no objections to the rezoning request.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? At this point, I'd like to close the public hearing and look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning request.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None being said, next item of business is, consider the approval of preliminary plat for the Eagle Edition. We'll look for staff for their report.
Okay, the applicant is Jeff Bertrand, Superintendent of Schools, on behalf of Independent School District Number 88. The current legal description of the property is Outlet 162 to 168, fraction P, part of Outlet 159 to 161, 169, and then 186 to 192, um, part of fraction O. Lot 1, Block 3, North Highland Avenue First Edition, as well as portions of Oak, Elm, and Boundary Streets located west and south of North Highland Avenue. Street address of the property is 1009 to 1507 North Highland Avenue and 1500 to 1908 Oak Street. Property, its current zoning is RA and R3 and rezoning to R1 is pending. The subject property totals 60.32 acres and the plat would create three lots. The plat would divide the property as follows. Lot 1, Block 1 would have 51.36 acres. Lot 1, Block 2 would have 1.03 acres. Lot 1, Block 3 would have 2.22 acres. And the acreage for the streets that are proposed as part of the plat is 5.71 acres. Current comprehensive plan designates the property for low and medium density residential land uses and a small portion for park and open space. Comprehensive plan designates a park to the west of the platted area. Utilities to serve the property adjoin the site in Oak Street and North Highland Avenue. Attached is a copy of the preliminary plat and a project site plan. With the other information provided with the rezoning, I didn't think it was necessary to again reproduce that for this particular request. Staff would recommend approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the following conditions. Number one, pay the plat application fee of $206. It's a base fee of $125 and $27 per lot. Staff would recommend waiving the parkland dedication fee of $990 due to the number of athletic fields and the amount of open states, space proposed for the property. I just think that the public is going to get a lot of use out of this facility and I don't think a parkland dedication fee is warranted. Enter into development agreement, that's number three. Number four is provide necessary easements. Some of those are identified on the plat, but we will have others that we are going to request as well. Number five is provide an electronic file of the plat in an AutoCAD 2000, our newer format. Number six is rezone the property from RA and R3 to R1. And seven is complete the vacation of the required rights of way. If you look at the plat, just a couple of things I'd like to note. At the present time, Oak Street proceeds in kind of a southwesterly direction, but it's a straight line all the way to Boundary Street. You will note that the new alignment for Oak Street, it veers more in a southerly direction. And the street at the present time is 60 feet wide, this new street will be 80 feet wide. Then you'll note at the top of the plat that there is a street that comes off of North Highland Avenue that is consistent with one of the requirements of our comprehensive plan, that 16th North Street, which is the street that runs by the old Runnings Building, that that street will extend all the way to North Highland Avenue. And then it continues and curves in a southerly direction and eventually it will cross 7th North Street, it will cross 5th North Street, and it could go all the way to Betco Road. So this segment of the street is being platted at, at this time. And the original Boundary Street width was 30 feet and the school district is providing an additional 50 feet, so we'll have an 80-foot right-of-way. In turn, the city is exchanging some property with the school district. We're giving up the existing Oak Street right-of-way. And then we're also giving up that parcel of property in the northern corner of the site as well, and that kind of evens out fairly closely.
Sure.
Thank you, Dave. Any discussion?
So there will be a street, that Boundary Street will be developed as a street?
Um, it will not be, it'll be platted.
It'll be platted, not developed. Okay.
At this time, it will not be developed as a street.
But Oak Street will, that, and that'll just kind of be a dead end?
As, as shown on the plat, so that'll proceed to the edge of the school district's property.
And stop.
And at that point, it will stop and there'll be a, um, a cul-de-sac, a small cul-de-sac provided in that space. It will also be possible to turn around within the school district's parking lot as well, so.
Any other discussion? Look for a motion.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? None being said. Next item would be number four. Consider for approval the request of Glenn Weck to use a non-platted legal description to facilitate the sale of the property legally described as part of Outlet 152A and 153A.
Okay. The street address of this property is 1213 to 1227 Elm Street. The property is owned RA Agricultural Residence District. The property is generally located west of North Garden Street and south of Elm Street. The total lot area of Outlet 152A and 153A is 6.02 acres. This area consists of wooded hillside and it's currently in its natural condition. Mr. Weck would propose to sell 1.5 acres of this parcel to Tom Hala. Hala Properties Partnership owns the adjoining Outlet 152B and 153B. Those two properties total 1.54 acres. And if you remember from Mr. Hala's request to mine in this particular area, this site is proposed for some residential building lots. The acquisition of this property allows for the creation of lots that comply with our subdivision regulations and. The applicant requests authorization to sell this property prior to plating using a meets and bounds legal description for this purpose. The city code prohibits the sale of property that uses that type of legal description. The city code does allow the city council to waive that plating requirement, provided compliance with the foregoing restriction would create an unnecessary hardship and failure to comply does not interfere with the purpose of the subdivision regulations. The city's comprehensive plan designates this area for low-density residential housing. It does not have medium-density residential housing, that's an error in the, in the staff report. The proposed legal description is acceptable to Brown County. The city has approved similar requests in the past. Attached is a letter from the applicant, the proposed legal description, and survey, as well as an aerial photo of the property. Staff would recommend approval of the request since the sale would facilitate future residential development in this area. Approval should be subject to the following conditions. Property will be platted prior to the issuance of a building permit by the city for construction on the subject property. The applicant will record the resolution with the Brown County Recorder's Office and pay the appropriate recording fee. And finally, the new parcel will be combined with Outlet 152B and 153B to form one parcel of property for tax and building purposes. That's it.
Thank you, Dave. Would you like to open it up for discussion? I guess I have a question for Dave. I mean, being we already, well, uh, granted him for mining operations, so I'm assuming mining operations will be going on in this plat then too, or?
Um, there was a, um, a limited amount of mining that would have impacted this parcel of property. I think it was more to make sure that contours kind of matched in with the existing topography. And, and to date, we still haven't received a request for a mining license from Hala Properties, so don't know the status of that.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None being said. Next item is, ah, five, status revisions to zoning and subdivision regulations. Dave.
Okay, we still haven't met. Hopefully sometime in March, that'll be possible. I'll, we'll send out an email.
Thank you, Dave. Item six, receive report on city council decisions concerning planning commission matters for February 2015.
Okay, at the February 3rd city council meeting, they approved the vacation of an alley in Block 209 north of Center Street. This is on North Front Street. And the owners of the property in that block are Mike Crawl and Greg Home of S&amp;H Capital. Southern Minnesota Tooling is located at that, in that block. And it's, both parties indicated that the alley vacation would allow them to expand their facilities in that location. Received notice that the council did that the planning commission had determined that the TIF plan for the apartment project on South Minnesota Street, that you had found the plan to be consistent with the city's general development plan. They approved the application of Matt Mathiowetz of MR Paving and Excavating for a conditional use permit to allow the excavation of materials from the property at 823 to 903 23rd North Street and 905 to 1005 Boundary Street. And might note that we have received an application for a mining license for that property as well, so looks like that is going to proceed, subject to the approval of the city council, you know, of the license. I hope I'm not taking this item from you, but they authorized the HPC to apply for a grant to be used to hire Dan Hoysington to write a historical narrative of the Waorju Distillery that's located in Harmon Park. And the narrative will hopefully allow for the placement of the structure on the National Register of Historic Places. They approved a resolution accepting a contamination cleanup grant from the State of Minnesota, and that's to be used for the city center apartment project, again, on South Minnesota Street. At the February 17th meeting, they conducted a public hearing and approved then the TIF plan for the city center apartment project. And then they also received petitions for, actually two petitions, no, it was one petition for a street vacation as part of the school project. And then they also authorized a public hearing for the vacation of another section of right-of-way in that particular area. That's it. Excuse me, they set the public hearing then for those two street vacations for March 17th.
Thank you, Dave. And item seven, receive report on heritage preservation commission activities. How would?
Uh, we did not have a meeting in February.
With no further business, meeting adjourned.